May I call the Board of Education meeting of Parsippany Troy Hills Board of Education to order on Thursday, October 26, 2023. In compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act in the following manner. A meeting notice was published in the newspaper and on the district website on January 6, 2023. In addition, the notice of the meeting was posted at the municipal building, in the schools, and a copy of the notice filed with the township clerk and transmitted to other newspapers on October 18, 2023: The Daily Record, The Star-Ledger, Parsippany Focus, Tap into Parsippany, Patch, and the district website. This regular public board meeting is being video recorded as per Bylaw 0168. The recordings of these meetings will be available on our district website and our Video on the Go YouTube channel. We ask that you please refrain from using student or staff names in your statements. Professionalism is expected at all times. May we have the roll call, please?
Mrs. Abraham?
Here.
Mr. DeVito?
Here.
Mrs. Mayer?
Here.
Mrs. Orm? Not here. Mr. Rea?
Here.
Mrs. Chappell?
Here.
Mrs. Von Aiken?
Here.
Mrs. Goldur?
Here.
Mrs. Cogan?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so for the student committee reports, Emily Smith.
Hello. A lot has happened at Par High in the last two weeks. The PTSA has been holding their clothing drive on October 24th, 25th, and 26th. Drop-off is Long Hawks Trail, which is the road to the side of the school. The Science Olympiad had a meeting on the 19th. Cybersecurity Awareness Month. This month of October is Cybersecurity Awareness Month. And to celebrate this, the HACC Club held a Cybersecurity Awareness Challenge where three people will win. Homecoming tickets were sold last Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. The Homecoming Game, themed a mix of Barbie and Breast Cancer Pinkout, was lost 45 to 14 against Kinalan. The Homecoming Dance, themed Barbie Movie Night, was a blast with the most attendees, approximately 700 people, with Gianna Picconi and Jake Bank as the freshman court, Giuliana Mariello and Jordan McDonald-Charles as the sophomore court, Marissa Christ and Frankie DiMary as the junior court, Valerie Dominic and Michael Coppola, Abby Collins and Felipe Shuck, and Hossini Alumala and Jake Mathias as the senior court, and finally Jasmine Bullock and R. Tiagi as the king and queen. Asian American Club is having a street fair event on November 3, where they're providing food from all different Asian countries. We had our second college fair on the 24th. The Red Cross Club had their big ghoulie packing event last Friday, where they made bags of candy and games that were donated by members for kids this Halloween. Halloween at the High, run by the Key Club, is this Friday from 6 to 8 p.m. The Italian Club is hosting a Halloween-themed tombola for all members today after school. Three of our students have been chosen for the ACDA All Eastern Honors Choir. Emma Gonzalez, who's a soprano I, Anya Sinha, alto I, and Stephanie Guan, alto II. This choir had auditions from all over the East Coast. The sophomore class held a service night, putting together wellness bags for caregivers with family in the hospital, as well as a dine-out fundraiser at Parsippany Best today. We just mentioned the fundraiser when ordering, and 15% of the profits will go to the sophomore class. The Indian Culture Club is having a movie night tonight for members and non-members of their club to watch and enjoy. The volleyball team had their senior night yesterday against Mount St. Dominic and lost 2-0. Boys soccer lost their second round in the NJSIA tournament, as well as in the Morris County Tournament. Girls soccer is playing today against Hackettstown for the first round of their NJSIA tournament. Winter Cheerleading had their info session before tryouts on the 18th. Girls and boys basketball had their preseason meetings on the 19th. Winter Track and Field had their interest meeting on the 19th. Wrestling had their interest meeting on the 23rd. And Georgia Kachulis, a junior on the field hockey team, has been nominated for Daily Record Morris Sussex Athlete of the Week, and voting closed at 6 p.m. today. And we have our first superintendent-student advisory meeting tomorrow. Thank you.
Do we have any questions for Emily? All right, Zanika?
Hi, everyone. We had our homecoming game and dance on the 14th. Over 600 people showed up, and Bree Kelly and Jalen Royal won homecoming queen and king, respectively. Tennis coach Coach Bon Giovanni celebrated his 250th win. Halloween at the Hills was rescheduled for Monday, October 30, from 5 to 7. All clubs will be participating with the option of having a scary of fun or just like giving out candy house, because the food room just gives out cookies usually, which is probably the best part, but still. This Monday, we had, or this Wednesday, we had our office hour half-day, which helped a lot of people. We've had student volunteers meet and help new students around the building called Viking Ambassadors. Students include Mahi Patel, Ragavi Shankaram, Preshab Akshay, Laura Habib, Cheyenne Wald, Adriana DiDomenico, Joyce Beckett, Jada Thompson, Maya Spencer-Elli, Delaney Coria, and Addison Martel. Our boys soccer team are the division champions for the first time since 1987. Wrestling had their first meeting during lunch today. There was a college fair during Block 5 yesterday. Freshman steering had their first meeting this week. And NAHS had a meeting after school today to discuss upcoming events. And the American Muslim Association had a fundraiser after school today and yesterday to support the club and children of the West Bank. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for our students? All right, thank you. Reports, okay. At this time, we're going to suspend tonight's regular agenda to allow for the presentation by Dr. Nancy Gigante, Director of Planning, Research, and Evaluation. Academic and Technology Operations will present the 2223 standardized testing results.
Okay. Very powerful. Okay. It is my pleasure to be here to present to you the, we call it the student achievement results, but I do think it's important to just always keep in mind that I'm really presenting on the state standardized testing results. And it's really only one piece of the picture of our students' achievement. Certainly, there are a lot of other ways that we measure performance in the classroom, and there are a lot of achievements outside of the classroom. So again, this is one picture, one piece of the picture, and it is the state standardized tests. And before I start, some of you who have been on the board for a while and/or may have otherwise seen some of these presentations in years past will recognize a familiar format is back again. Because we, for a couple of years, had nothing. 2020 and 2021, we had no testing, standardized testing. And then last year, in 2022, we sort of got our new baseline. So we weren't looking at 2022 tests compared to anything else, because, I mean, it's not even just education. Everybody says, right, don't compare anything to before the pandemic, because the world changed. So you really don't get anywhere comparing now to then. So we said last year that would be our new baseline. Well, now this year, we can do a little bit of a comparison, and we can see how the 2023 results compare to the 2022 results. So the format will be familiar to those of you who have seen these before, and that's a good thing. Let me start by taking you through the assessments that our students took in 2022 and 2023 school year, and these are the ones that will be represented, with the exception of one, on the slides. So the first is the NJSLA. That's like the biggest and the most far-reaching. So those are our English Language Arts and our Mathematics tests for ELA in grades 3 through 9, and for math in grades 3 through 9. But you see in the parentheses there, the Algebra I and the Geometry, because for some students in 8 or 9, even 7 sometimes, they're not taking the grade-level math, they're taking Algebra I or Geometry. The NJGPA is also Language Arts and Mathematics, and that was a new test. Last year was the first year that it became the graduation test for the 11th grade. So only 11th grade takes that test, and they do take it in the spring. That's like the main administration, just like all these other tests. But because it's the graduation requirement, the state offers the test additional times. So we had a summer administration and a fall administration. And seniors who might need it can retake it again, even in the regular 11th grade administration in the spring. Those are not represented because the, in August, I presented to you those results of our big, regular, spring NJGPA. So they're the only ones that won't be on the slides. The NJSLA also has a science test, a science component, that's only tested in grades 5, 8, and 11. Then we have the Dynamic Learning Maps, that we just call the DLMs. And those are for students who don't take the NJSLA, because they have the most significant cognitive impairments. They take the Dynamic Learning Map English or Dynamic Learning Map Math. And that's all determined by our pupil personnel staff as to who takes that. The ACCESS 2.0 is our English Language Learner test that's administered early in the spring, very early in the spring, really before we get to the NJSLA. And then we have our standard AP SAT and ACT, which you're very familiar with, the Advanced Placement Exams by subject, and then the SAT and ACT. We'll take a look at those. So we will get started here. And I will say this is, or could be, a familiar look to you. Nice little bar graph, column graph, however you want to call it. For, we're starting with ELA, English Language Arts, in grade 3. And what you're going to see on this slide and the slides following it are the percentage of students in that grade level who were proficient in that subject. Couple of things to remember. These are not the same students. Oh yeah, my pointer doesn't work on that. Where's Joni? We gotta, yeah, we gotta find. I do, because like, you have to point. Like, I'm gonna just get a long, like Mickey Mouse finger, like, you know, just put it. But, because I feel the need to point. But in the red, those are the students who were in 3rd grade in 2022. And then the blue are the students who were in 3rd grade in 2023. So they're different kids. Okay, so we're just looking at the grade level. And I also wanted to draw your attention to the difference in the percentages, because 69 to 71, okay, great, going in the right direction, right? We don't necessarily call that a significant increase, though. So I want to just talk about what I mean when I say significant. We determined several years back, and we've been using this now, the percentage of 4% as being significant. So why did we pick 4%? Because in our district, every class, every grade level has about 500, 550 kids. We figured, what's significant, what's a significant number of kids then? And it turned out to be about 4%, because that would be about 2022 kids. That's like a class size, we said. And so we said if something was going on with an entire class of students, anything going on with an entire class of students, we would call it significant. And so that's how we came to decide on this 4%. So when we see 1 or 2, whether it's moving in the right direction or the wrong direction, we don't want to get too, you know, crazy about it. But we want to wait till we see a significant change, and that's when we'll focus our attention and say, okay, what's going on here, good or bad? What are we doing well? What should we look at to maybe improve? Okay, so anyway, there you go, the 22 and 23 3rd grade. 4th grade? So again, they went up, 1. 5th grade? Went up what we would call significantly from the grade before them. 6th? 7th? 8th? And 9th? That was a very significant, very nice jump there. Now we move into slides that are going to show us growth, and they are different. This line graph will show us a different set of data, right? Because these are all snapshots, and they're all good data to have. But they are all just different ways of looking at things. So what you're looking at here is data on our current 5th graders. They are in 5th grade now. So last year, in 2023, they took the 4th grade Language Arts test, and the year before that, they took the 3rd grade. And what's represented here are only students who took both, because we're trying to find the growth. And so we can't count the kids who were with us in 3rd but then left, or who just came in 4th, because we can't see their growth. They're only here for one of those two. So we only want the kids who are here for both. That's why if you tried to like line this up with the bar graph percentages, they're most likely going to be different. But anyway, what we see here is a nice jump. Good growth from 71 to 77 of those same kids being proficient in ELA. Okay, our current 6th grade. Kids who are currently in 6th grade and took the test in 5th and 4th. Now, we do see a significant dip there. But that's good information for us to have. And I'm going to give you a little hint. You're going to see it on the next slide as well, with the current 7th graders. And then you're not going to see that again till we see these same two groups of kids in math. You're going to see it again. That's really good data. Of course, you don't, you don't want to see it go down, but it's very good for us to be able to pinpoint where it's happening and focus our energies, and I'll talk a little bit about that later. So there we have our current 6th graders going down. And there's the 7th grade that I talked about. From their performance, their proficiency level when they were in 5th to their proficiency level when they were in 6th. Current 8th graders went up nicely. Their growth was good growth, significant growth, actually. Our current 9th graders, significant growth. Our current 10th graders, really nice, 55% proficient to 64% proficient. Now we're going to leave Language Arts, okay? Because our current 10th graders, they were 9th graders last year, so that was it with Language Arts. Now we're at Mathematics. The 2022 3rd graders next to the 2023 3rd graders. And that's good to see. Same thing, almost, almost exactly the same in grade 4. Nice little jump. Grade 5. Grade 6. Grade 7. Grade 8. Okay, so here's one where you don't see the nice jump. We're seeing a nice jump in all that math, and why not here? Well, this is an interesting group, because this group is taking grade 8 math, which means we've taken our top-performing math students out, because they're going to Algebra in 8th grade. And so these are your lower-performing math students. That's why the numbers, even, you know, it went down from the year before, but even the year before was low to begin with. But that's why, because this group has the top performers out of it. But it is, you know, good information to have that that group was significantly lower than the group before it. I will also say, some of these numbers are startling or not what you want to see. We are still well above the state average, just in case anybody's wondering. State average here is like 18. Okay, so truly 18. This is Algebra I percent proficient. That would be, though, not just those high-performing 8th grade Algebra I students, it's also those students who take it in 9th grade. So they were in that 8th grade math group and then took Algebra I. Because if you look here at Geometry, that would only be 9th graders who have Geometry, and those are your stronger math students. And they made, although, you know, it's apples and oranges, it's a different group of kids, but they were, they performed much better than the Geometry kids before them. Okay, now we go to the line graphs to see how those same kids grew. That's our current 5th grade. And now here we go, that's the current 6th. That's the same group that was in the ELA going down. And oddly, at exactly this, they have exactly the same numbers. I had to do this five times, I thought I was doing something wrong. Because I'm like, how is math coming out exactly? But it is. 71 to 66. Okay? And I'll assure you in all of these cases as well, like, 66 sounds low. The state is like in the 40s. Okay, high 40s, low 50s. So we're never below that in any of these slides. And then here's the 7th grade. So significant dip. But here's where I say it's good, and we are kind of lucky. And Dr. Mulrooney and I have talked about this, and we're looking at this data, and he'll continue looking at it with his curriculum supervisors. One thing that's helpful is that these students now are in middle school. They're in a teaming model. And so we do have teachers naturally working together so that you can look at those standards together. And there could be crossover. There's word problems in math, for instance. So if we can pinpoint specific reading standards that are problematic for this group, that might carry over to word problems in math. So that's one good thing about seeing that it is such a focused group. And so we're not having to spend our energy all over. We know it's these kids that we want to look at. And we know we already do have that model in place to work cross-curricularly with them. These are, and you're going to have a couple of slides for current 8th grade, current 9th grade, current 10th grade, because the kids branch off into different maths. Okay, so one of the current 8th grade groups was in Math 6, and then Algebra I in 7th grade. So that's a really high-performing group of math students, and you wouldn't be surprised by that. They were at 100%, and they're still at 100% proficient. Another 8th grade group is the group that went from Math 6 to Math 7. And they had a significant increase in proficiency, which is really nice. Our current 9th graders have a couple groups of those two. They had Algebra I in 7th, and then Geometry in 8th. So that's that like 100-100 group that went to Algebra in 7th. They had a nice little jump, and they're at 100, can't get better than that. Another current 9th grade went from Math 7 to Algebra I in 8th. And they also increased by 1 to 98. And then this is your 9th grade that had regular 7th grade math and regular 8th grade math. And they held steady. And again, I'll remind you of the 18 that the state had, in case you don't like to see those numbers. But they're holding steady themselves. So we know we want to move them upward, but it's okay that we're seeing steady rather than anything going down. Current 10th graders, we look at as well, because they were testing last year in 9th. And these would be students who had Algebra I in 8th and then Geometry in 9th. So a little dip, but not significant, because it's only 3 percentage points, and it's still up in the 90s. And this group of current 10th graders, who is that Math 8 group to Algebra I in high school, but they did grow significantly. So that's very good. It's very nice for us to see. Okay, now we're at the Science. The Science just has the bar graphs. We don't do the growth model, because it's not, I guess we started the growth, watching the growth in English and math, because those are accountability subjects that come in state reports and things like that. That doesn't happen for Science, so we just always look at them as a whole group. Also, there are many years between when they take Science. So to say like, well, last year you were this, and it's like, that year you were this, and then three years later, you were this, a lot happens in those three years with students and development and kids moving in and moving out. And it's so much transition that looking at the line graph probably wouldn't be as reliable as looking at the line graph of one year to the next year. In any event, here we go with the 5th grade, which is up a little bit. The 8th grade, up significantly from the class before them. And the 11th grade, also up. So all three Sciences up. Okay, and we always report out, we are required to report out on these subgroups. So what you're looking at here is a growth model chart for English Language Arts district-wide, all grades. And the top line is all students. And then the other lines are the subgroups that we look at. The blue, I think it's blue, ELL for English Language Learners. That reddish, rust-colored one for economically disadvantaged. And the light green for special education. And you can see really nice growth overall, which is great. And all of the groups, only the ELL group down 1 from 25 to 24, which we wouldn't say was significant. And as it is the English Language Test, we don't want to get too crazy about this either then. And you'll see that the access results for the ELL students show growth. So even on this, even though on this slide you see that 1%, we seem to be okay. And then for math. Little bit of a different picture for the all-students group and our economically disadvantaged groups. Our ELL and our Special Ed both made nice, significant progress. 21 to 31 for ELL, 16 to 24 for Special Ed. But then we do have, or we are looking at, the all-group and the economically disadvantaged group. I was talking about the DLM, and so we are required to report out how our students did and how many students we're talking about. We're talking about 57 students, district-wide. And the percent that were, they are not scored as proficient or not. They are scored only as advanced, at the target, approaching the target, or not on target. So the at-target or advanced, we are at 19% and 12%. And those are not uncommon, those are very similar numbers to what we see year to year. And certainly, Mr. Courtwright is, you know, looking at all of that and working with his teams through whatever specific areas. They're very individualized, the reports are all individualized. We don't even get a district-wide report of this. I literally go through the individual students. So that's the approach to DLM, very individualized, like an IEP. And so that's how the pupil personnel, people, and staff look at these results and use them to inform their practice. Okay, this is the access for Ls. And we had a nice little jump there, from 14, overall 14% proficient to 17% proficient in the language, in language acquisition. The access test is the test that exits students from the ELL services once they have met those, the language acquisition proficiency. These are up as a matter of information that we always share with you before we look at any AP scores, just so you know the courses that we've offered. From last year to this year, these are still the same courses. Nothing's been, nothing's gone away, and nothing's been added from last year to this year. Okay, so we look at the AP tests in a couple of ways. This first way looks at the four on the left, the four bars, columns on the left are for 2022, and on the right are for 2023. I was looking as early as this morning for the AP releases what's called a score distribution report. And the official 2023 one, although they say is coming in October, it is only October, what, 26th? Not here yet. So some of these numbers are unavailable for the nation, the state, and certainly the comparative high schools. I'm never able to get that until like the spring, when the school performance reports come out. But in any event, there is good news on this slide. In terms of our district's progress against itself, you'll see that more exams received a score of 3, 4, or 5 last year, 74.5% over the year before, which was 69. Seventy-four point five percent over the year before, which was sixty-nine point eight. AP, for those of you who may not know, students take subject tests and receive scores anywhere from one to five. And colleges will usually accept a three and then certainly a four or five for the college credit for that class. So that's why we look at how many did we get, three, four, or five? Because those are sort of the quote-unquote "passing" numbers. So that's, that's good to see. And on this, what we look at is this was exam, that was exams that received of three, four, or five. This is number of students, because a student could have five exams, number of students who received a score of three, four, or five. And that percentage is always lower, much lower. But you will see that we made nice growth here as well. So from thirty-one point four to thirty-six point four. Again, those other AP measures aren't available for the other groups. What is available is SAT and ACT information though, so that's good. And in SAT, our average composite score right there went up a little bit from eleven sixty-seven to eleven seventy-one. So moving in the right direction. Certainly well above the state and the national. And again, those high school, those other comparative high schools don't come till much later anyway. But historically, we've, we've done better and hopefully will continue. And then the ACT performance, I don't know how many of you saw it, but it was just the other day and maybe last week. A lot of the news outlets picked up this story about ACT scores being the lowest they've been in 30 years. Did anybody see that? I saw it on NJ.com and on PBS.org. So it was picked up by some news outlets. But the ACT nationally is lower than it's been in 30 years. So take that as you will, but we did go down a little bit. Not a whole lot, but a little bit, from twenty-four point five to twenty-three point seven. Still above the national and just a little bit below the state. Okay. Are there any questions for me? Sure.
Okay. Thank you for this. It was very informative. However, one thing, you, you started off talking about like we didn't want to compare like the pre-COVID years. And frankly, I think that is a mistake because we know that there was COVID and that kids were impacted. But we don't know from looking at this how much they were impacted. It would be good to see where they were, where kids were, and where they are now and what we need to do to get them back to where they were. I don't think we could just say, this is where they are and we're not going to work to try and build it back up.
Certainly, the data is there to look at. When I say that we're cautioned to not make those comparisons, I mean, we are cautioned. In the state reports that we receive, we, it is from the state. You know, districts are cautioned not to make comparisons with, so that's what I'm sharing. The data is there for anyone to make the comparisons they would want to make. But it's sort of an acknowledged understanding that that maybe isn't the best idea because everything is so different. But it's there. It's there to be compared if someone wants to do that.
So what actions are taken? I mean, I assume there was a drop. So what are we doing to try and get back to where we were? Or like, again, we, we don't have the...
Right. I wouldn't make that assumption there was a drop because it will be different. For all of those slides, you would have those same slides for prior to the pandemic. And I wouldn't make the assumption that they would all be drops. We would have to actually look at that. That's not what this did, but that would be what would have to happen before we would know how we do compare to the pandemic because we're not, we haven't been comparing ourselves to that. Any other? Sure.
I just want to understand what the definition of proficient is. So I, I got the results from my kids. I'm just curious, like at what...
What level like?
Yeah. What grouping of scores proficient?
The scores are five, four, three, two, one. Four and five is proficient.
Thank you.
At the beginning, you said that this is obviously only one piece of data and there's multiple things that, you know, everybody is working on. Does this, does, do these specific tests ever get down to the teacher level so that they know which students got where?
Oh, very much so. Yeah. Good question. In the spring, we get the individual student reports and the individual student records very soon. So the window usually ends like May 24th or something. And by the first or second week of June, we can get what's called on-demand reports. And teachers and administrators can see those right away, how individual students did. And then over the course of the next few months, you get other reports. And they dig very deeply into all kinds of data. You can see a student, how a student did in particular content areas. You can see how the whole grade did in particular content areas. We can look at how one teacher's class did in particular areas. Those are the kinds of reports that now Dr. Mulrooney and I were really looking into when we looked at those two grades, the sixth and the seventh graders, to really get in there and see the, you know, the content. But the teachers and the administrators are doing that, you know, all the time. Yep.
With more colleges and universities putting less or fewer requirements on the SAT and ACT scores, are you seeing our students in a reduction of taking those tests?
Yes. Yes. ACT especially. Yes.
And I assume, is there a way for you to see if the students who are taking it, are they the higher-performing students who might see it as an advantage to what they submit to be considered?
Probably the guidance counselors could give you a much better answer anecdotally. I could see that. I could look at, you know, pick a GPA as a cutoff. If that's how we're going to define higher students, however we, and then see who's taking. I could see that, yes. But I think anecdotally, probably a guidance counselor would have better insight into, into that idea.
Thank you.
Do we as a district...
I can hear you.
You could probably hear me without a...
Don't go by that.
Do we as a district have a, have a number that we would like to, that we look to achieve in the different areas?
Like a percentage that we have? We've never set our, our sights on a particular, you know, no child left behind, everybody 100% by 30, the 2030. Yeah. We didn't do that. And I don't know that that's a bad thing. We want to look at growth. That's what we look at. We look at it the right way, I think, by eliminating students who didn't take both. You know, it's very easy to just look at the bars and go, well, that went down, that went. But we want to really get in there with those kids and then we want to get in there with those reports of specific, you know, skill level, skill sets or content areas with those kids. So I think that's a better approach. We've never set a goal for ourselves. I don't know that that's something we want to do.
Okay. I mean, I know that, you know, we're, we're offering algebra and geometry earlier, et cetera, so that we want to give the, we want to be able to give the students if, if they've, they're doing better, we want to be able to, to have them achieve a, you know, a, a different bar, if you will. But I guess in, in, in terms of English, you know, it's, it's not the same. I mean, you know, it's like for math, you could do algebra, geometry, those are more advanced. What would we do, for example, for English, for regular English learners?
Well, we differentiate in terms of honors-level courses and, and things like that once you get to the high school level. There is that differentiation. Starts a little sooner in math because math's just like a different animal. But right when you get to high school, there is a differentiation there.
Would we, would we consider at some point, though, doing something in the middle school level similar to offering certain, a certain program or, I mean...
Yeah.
Yeah. Middle school level, we, we've actually got away from tracking. We've got away from tracking at the middle school with the exception of our accelerated math program. For the humanities in particular, we want students to be together. And then when you get to high school, they can enter that honors track, which, which will lead to multiple AP opportunities for them. But at the middle school level, kids can, teachers can be differentiating instruction for their advanced students and students that need, you know, different, have different needs. So at this point, it isn't something that we've had as a goal as far as middle school language arts.
Okay. As Dennis said, you know, language arts, the humanities, they're a different animal than math. And so when you have students who are ready for, say, the next, you know, math builds. And so when you have students ready for that next level, you don't want them waiting. And so it makes sense to maybe differentiate younger. But in the humanities and with language arts specifically, the, the standards that, the skills that the kids are learning are pretty much set. And you're able to differentiate in a way that challenges, you don't need a separate level for it. You need that in math a little bit more, I think.
Okay. So, so in the elementary or middle school, how do we determine if a child is reading at that, at the age-appropriate level?
Well, reading levels are tested with our FMP and our...
Okay. But there, there, it's not part of this. It's more of an individual per, per school, per...
That would be like in the beginning of this, when I said there are plenty of other ways we measure student achievement, student performance. This is just one. That is one. The reading levels, the FMP scores, the math benchmarks. All of these things our teachers do are just in addition to this.
Would we be able to get district-wide it per, you know, it's like the proficiency of how many sixth graders do we have that are reading at a sixth-grade level? How many eighth-grade graders are reading at an eighth-grade level? You know, I mean, you can have a percentage of, of sixth graders reading at an eighth-grade level and vice versa. You can have eighth graders reading at a, at a sixth or a fifth-grade level. So is there, is it possible to, to give us that type of information?
Sure. So our Fontis and Pennell reading program...
I'm sorry.
Sure. No, our Fontis and Pennell reading program runs from kindergarten through fifth grade. So all through elementary school, the students are being assessed three times throughout the course of the year, beginning, middle, and end. Those evaluations and assessments, you know, what level the students are reading on. At the middle school, we don't do Fontis and Pennell anymore. So the best indicator of the student's reading, reading level or reading progress would be the standardized testing. Does that help?
Yeah. It helps. The information helps. I just wish we did, as a district, I don't want to say care enough because that would mean you don't care, which I know you do. So it, it, it would just be, just like we, we care about all the other numbers. It would, for me, it would just be, yes, you know, at least 75% of our kids are, are reading at their, you know, their, their age group level or, or grade level. You know, I just, you know, in, in terms of hearing people saying, oh, you know, our children are, are, have fallen behind in learning, et cetera. I, it would just personally would, I was just wondering because it would make me feel better. I mean, again, I just can't speak for the rest of the board, but...
Sure. I mean, but in fifth grade, we could give, give you that specific data. But I would hope...
In middle school, you can't.
I would hope that you're not feeling bad about how things are going because...
No. I, I don't know how things are going, truthfully. I mean, I could assume that we're doing good, but...
Well, I think the presentation would indicate, would indicate that. And the few areas where we hit it dead.
Yeah. But you see a number of 53, but, but you have a certain number of, of fifth-grade students. How many of those fifth-grade students in our, you know, in, in our 10 elementaries are actually reading at, at a, at their reading level, you know, their grade level?
That's that I could, I could share with you at a TLC meeting. Turn it on with you. Based on our elementary assessments and beginning, middle, and end of year. Sure. Okay. And then even to, to echo what Dr. Gigante said about the humanities and, and tracking students, that is a very different animal. To, to put student on an accelerated track in math takes very specific instructions, very specific standards. To have students skip grades and the skills that are assessed in those grades is, is an important undertaking. For the humanities, it's really a matter of equity and, and access at this level. And to track a student so early really is a dangerous thing and kind of creates a narrative for them that could follow them throughout all high school. So to, to start that at high school, we feel is a better, a better time to do that. And to keep them homogeneously educated at the middle school level, we think is best. So I hope that helps.
Any more questions for me?
Yeah. Just a follow-up. When you were saying the data is available for prior years, is it possible to get these graphs updated with the prior year's data? I know the school, the state said that they're, the guidance, but still, you know, I think it's helpful to be able to evaluate the data overall. Is it possible to get these updated with the prior years?
What you're looking for would be like 2019 and then to 2022?
Well, no, pre-COVID. You know, like basically the way the world was before COVID. And compared to where we are now.
I think Dr. Sutter wanted to say something. Did you want to say something?
What I was saying is, Jack, that would be, it would be, I think we have the data, but I'm not necessarily sure, like, like Dr. Gigante said before, it would be comparing apples to oranges. Like, I, I just don't see how, I, I think I, I know what you're after. You're, you're after, say, how much learning loss has happened from COVID. But those kids are long gone. And the ones that we have coming up now, we're seeing what they have through their third-grade data that you saw here. So I, I, we can probably get that for you.
But when you take such a large population of kids, it's, it, the average test scores probably were fairly similar. I mean, you know, based on, you know, upbringing, everything else, kids, you know, the way the town is. So the, the data is there. And I just, just to see where we were, where we are now and...
But if you had 10th-grade students that didn't take any standardized tests for two years, they're, they're gone. Like what would, I'm not, I'm not, I just, I guess I don't follow that because...
That, that's a good point about the students who, you know, we would be looking at, maybe 10th graders, they're in college or whatever. But what you could have access to immediately, I've done these very presentations on the 2019, 18, 17, 16, until I can't even remember. But they're all available to you to see and you would see exactly like that. You could, you know, Joni can have them produce for you and...
Are they not on our agenda, right? I mean, on the website?
They, they may be.
They may be archived there.
From previous presentations.
Yeah. They may be archived there. In any event, we have those presentations, so it'll look exactly like that.
Madam President, I would just remind the board, to the extent that you're asking administration for any specific information, those requests all have to go through Dr. Sutter's office so that we can make sure that we are clear about what we're asking for. And that directive will go from Dr. Sutter to the administration.
Are there any other questions for Dr. Gigante?
You did a great job. Thanks, Dr. Gigante.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now up to correspondence. Is there any correspondence to come before the board?
No. There's not.
Unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? Mr. DeVito?
Not, not necessarily unfinished business. It's just a comment, just a reminder that this is our last meeting before Election Day. We're not meeting again until November 16th. So just wanted to remind everyone to vote before Election Day. Early voting starts on Saturday, I believe. Thank you.
Okay. Now we're up to committee reports. Mr. Rea, do you have a committee report?
I don't think so.
No. I think, I think just, I was going to say, it says start at either end of the table, but I believe I'm the only one with a report. So finance met tonight. In attendance was myself, Mr. DeVito, Mrs. Goldur, Mrs. Von Aiken, Mrs. Tedesco, Dr. Sutter, and Mrs. Benos. We talked about the budget calendar, which was presented to the committee. We talked about the CEC roof replacement. The bid opening was this week and it is on our agenda tonight. It is higher than the budgeted amount because we were hoping to get a rod grant, which the district did not receive. We are still going to do the CEC roof replacement. Mrs. Tedesco is going to take the balance of the funding needed to replace the roof from other capital project lines in the budget that do have balances left over. We talked about local 32 negotiations. The district was contacted by local 32 to give them, you know, some salary benefit and other information to start the negotiation process. That agreement is set to expire on June 30th, 2024. So Mrs. Tedesco and Mr. Ricker will work together to gather the information for the union. We also discussed the PHS windows, Brooklawn windows, Mount Tabor chairlift. Unofficially, the district was told that they didn't, we did not receive rod grants for any of those projects. So we will have to fund all of those projects. The chairlift replacement has, Mrs. Tedesco has reached out to the architects to start that, you know, Department of Ed submittal process as soon as possible. On the November 16th bulletin, that approval will probably be on that bulletin. And then the architects are reviewing both window projects to see how many of those we can do with the funds that we currently have budgeted. We talked about the Littleton update. There's another issue with the storm drainage system. So they're going to have to rearrange a little with that and get other pipes that they weren't expecting. But we're obviously working with the contractors, you know, to get that back up and running. We just started a discussion on, you know, grants and trying to see if there was any kind of grant information we could start getting to help supplement some of the, you know, projects we want to do. And then we also talked about the audit. It is set to start November 6th. Mrs. Tedesco is trying to get the auditors in here as soon as possible because the deadline is in December, the beginning of December. So a month for the audit is not really ideal. The auditors think they will get an extension, but obviously nothing is, you know, promised. So we'll, Mrs. Tedesco is going to keep the board informed about the audit timeline and submission dates and the status. And that is our finance report. Are there any questions? Ms. Fine?
Not a question, just if you don't mind, just to also mention, part of the Littleton update was also, item 47 on the addendum is about an inspection service that the town is requiring for us to get the rest of the permits. So that is on there for approval.
Yes, thank you. And then five of us went to the school boards conference this week and, you know, took workshops and everything. So my usual request is that if there's anybody, you know, at the next meeting who wants to, you know, describe some of the classes they went to and, you know, some of the things that they found helpful, I would appreciate it if other, you know, people would come prepared next meeting to, you know, give a little report on what they went to. All right, so next is the approval of minutes for executive and regular minutes of October 12th, 2023. May I have a motion? Mrs. Mayor and a second. Mr. DeVito, roll call.
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Raya?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappelle?
Yes.
Mrs. Von Aiken?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldur?
Abstain. Abstain in, for executive and yes on regular minutes.
Mrs. Kogan?
Yes.
All right, we're now up to superintendent's motion, number eight. Dr. Sutter.
Thank you, President Kogan. Good evening, everyone. I want to congratulate our, our marching band, both the Red Hawk Marching Band for taking second place in the U.S. Band Competition at Vernon Township High School on Saturday, and to the Viking Marching Band for taking second place at the Regional Championships at West Essex High School on Sunday. We're very proud of our musicians and our color guard. On Monday, October 23rd, the district had a half-day, half-professional day for teaching staff. Dr. Mulrooney and his administrative staff provided over 50 sessions for district faculty to attend. Dr. Mulrooney did an excellent job. Thanks, Dennis. The district partnered with Susan Rosenbloom from Drew University and Nancy Headinger from the League of Women Voters to bring a nonpartisan civics program to our sixth grade students at CMS and BMS titled Energizing Your Voters, Young Voters. We want to thank both women for this excellent educational opportunity. And the district would like to thank Sustainable Parsippany for meeting with us on Tuesday. The purpose of the meeting was to inform us of the opportunities available to the district. Tonight, for your approval, we have superintendent bulletin items one through 31 with addendum and read-in items 32 through 48.
Are any questions or comments on the superintendent's bulletin? Mr. DeVito?
Not on the bulletin. I just noticed something there, Dr. Sutter, about the League of Women Voters that came for the sixth graders. I'm wondering if they would ever consider doing the same for like our juniors in high school. Because you think about it, some of them are becoming voters in their senior year, like my daughter, in the next few days. So, and they're like, you know, want to know more about that kind of stuff, maybe.
I believe they were at the high school, the Parsippany High School, the League of Women Voters.
The secretary's report is next. Mrs. Tedesco?
Hi, everyone. On tonight's secretary's report, we have our regular business motions, including the approval of the CEC roof replacement. Does anybody have any questions?
Okay. We had no new business mentioned, so we will go to the hearing of the public. At this time, if there's anyone who would like to address the board, please come up, sign your name and address in the book at the lectern and state your name for the record. Please address the chair. Each person will have three minutes to speak to the board. It will be helpful if you would like to address the board. Please come up now and sign the book so you are ready when the first speaker is finished.
Good evening.
Hi, everyone. My name is Victoria Stockdale, and this is my son. I come as an advocate, but he's about to turn 18 in April, and now it is time for him to learn how to advocate for himself. So he's seen, he goes to an out-of-district school because he has autism and ADHD. And one of his strengths is that he is athletic and he loves to swim with district. So he wants, he constantly asks me a question. Am I able to swim with district? Because he needs a para with him or someone with him. And it's so important for him to learn how to express himself because language is a deficit for him. And, and to enable him, I'm going to ask that he ask or advocate for himself. Now you need to tell them why you want to swim with district.
I want to swim with district because I really like it. All the kids really helped me there. And it's really, I like going to swim with district. And I feel like swimming is a really good thing to help me stay away from things, bad things that have bothered me in my other stool, like drugs and stuff. It helps me think of something positive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Nicole Delphay, 44 Reynolds Avenue in Parsippany. I have just a couple of questions about, one about the math track that I know they've really upped the game with Algebra I and Geometry when they get to middle school, especially if they meet a certain criteria. My question is, the students that don't, I feel like they're getting lost in the shuffle a little bit. And I just kind of want to know the numbers of kids that may get to algebra in eighth grade, if they're not on the track ahead of time when they take those tests in fourth and fifth grade. I saw it before I stopped, before I stopped teaching. My daughter went through it. So just curious as to the numbers of that program, if you have them now that it's been on going for a little while. Second question, have you ever thought about putting AC at the high school gym? Because it's really hot. My daughter and her friends played volleyball this year, and it's super hot in there all the time. And lastly, just with the science, I'm just going to address Mr. Raya's question about the testing, comparing some things. My daughter took, was in fifth grade when COVID hit, so she did not take the fifth grade science test. So her first time taking science was in eighth grade. So it's hard to, it's just, it's hard to compare. That's, I had a light bulb. I wanted to let you know that certain things are really difficult, so. My voice is shaking. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lamia, 40 Ambler Way in Parsippany. So I know we concentrate so much, like talking about the test scores, like language arts and math, but I do see a deficit in science. So my son, you know, he was in fifth grade during COVID and everything like that. And I don't want to say COVID, like we keep bringing COVID, COVID. I know we post-COVID, but it does add to their personality, I think. They're kind of missing out their learning, especially when it comes to science. And I kind of saw it on his, on his report that came back. And now when he's actually in biology, they're saying, oh, maybe, you know, he needs the help, but, or maybe he's not a high, like he's not at that level. But again, maybe he's doing so well in all of his classes, except science. So is there, is it just him or is it a district law? Like, you know, like I don't want to just say, oh, it's just my son having that issue with science. But, oops, sorry. So that was, that's one of the issues. The other one is, he came home and he starts saying, um, their kids are vaping and doing drugs and things in high school, since this is his first year in high school. And I was kind of alarmed. And I asked one of his friends, and she was like, yeah, they do, they do vape. I was like, so what happens to them? Oh, they get suspended. So why are we waiting? Like, you know, for these kids, maybe they're trying things out. They're trying to see like what's out there. And God forbid, if something really happens and we lose a child because they're get addicts or something. So I'm not even sure if it's allowed to do random drug tests in schools. And maybe they get scared. I'm, I'm, I'm just throwing things out there. I'm not really sure what is the law there when it comes to something like that. But it really scares me because we want to, like Parsippany has a great school, like school system, and I really like it a lot. And that's why my son didn't go to Voltech, and he was accepted there, and I kept him in district. But at the same time, I want to make sure that I'm not leaving him in an environment where it's okay, which I know the district is not saying it is okay to smoke or whatever. But maybe we need to have a little bit more of advocate into that or teach him more, have more lessons or whatever it takes. And, you know, we have a lot of community advocacy that would go and help and talk to the children, you know. Thank you. I hope it wasn't more than three minutes.
Okay, we're going to close the hearing of the public.
Yes. I would like to thank Zachary. Thank you very much. Ms. Stockdale, thank you very much. We are actively searching for a paraprofessional for your son at this moment. With regards to the science scores, Ms. Delphay, I don't have those available to me at this time. But we'll speak about the air conditioning at our committee meeting. Mrs. Lamia, with regards to the science, I don't have that information with me at this time either. But with regards to vaping in the schools, we are, you know, if you are caught vaping, you know, you would be, there would be a consequence. We do do proactive steps, like we are having assemblies. We have guest speakers come in. So we are trying, you know, our, our hardest to explain to the students and the children that vaping is not acceptable, especially in school. So we are taking a proactive approach to that. Yeah, I would.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're up to the roll call vote for superintendent's bulletin, number eight, items number one through 31 with addendum items 32 through 48. May I have a motion? Mrs. Mayor, second. Mrs. Von Aiken. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Raya?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappelle?
Yes.
Mrs. Von Aiken?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldur?
Yes.
Mrs. Kogan?
Yes.
So there being no further business, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Mrs. Chappelle and a second. Mrs. Abraham? Things are gone? All in favor?
Aye.
Needing adjourned.